Good morning, everybody. It's 7:30, or 7:00 AM on May 15th, we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls Committee of the Whole to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Several items on the agenda, not too many, and I do want to add Kyle and Bill are here, they want to talk about a potential cruise night that they want to bring to Fergus Falls, so we'll add that at the end of the agenda, but first to kick us off, we'll talk about 2024 Street and Utility Project Number One.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good morning, members. The preliminary report is now complete for Public Improvement 5961. This is the 2024 Street and Utility Improvement Project of Junius Avenue from Union Avenue to Cascade. In general, from an engineering standpoint, this project is feasible, cost-effective, and necessary. I'm going to turn it over to Alex Sworsoff, he's going to give you go through some of the components of the PER, and then after that, I'll speak more on the other topics, which I'm requesting action on, so at this time.
Morning, Alex.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for the time to go over this PER with you. So, we were asked by the City Engineering Department to review a potential project on Junius Avenue running from Union Avenue to Cascade. We looked at a number of different alternatives, I'll just run through those quickly for you. Do-nothing alternative is always an option. If you've driven Junius Avenue, it's not a good option. I drive that one to work every day, so. Base project we looked at was reconstructing the street in utilities, like I said, from Union to Cascade, including curb and gutter, water, sewer, sanitary, and that would also include bringing this project up to state aid standards, as this is a state aid street, and this project is anticipated to use state aid funds. We looked at two resurfacing alternates, shown here in blue and green, to add Court Street and Mill Street. At this time, we're not recommending including those in this project, both because of the cost of the project and because of the potential for future projects, so these could be either included as a separate project or part of a future, I believe there's a, I think Washington's on the capital improvement plan for down the road as well. And then alternate three is probably the big one. There is a sewer line currently that runs under the railroad tracks, past NP Park and down to Union Avenue, that is an aging sewer line. As part of this process, the city did go out and, city crew went out and televised that line, and it does look like it is a good candidate for a lining project, rather than the alternatives included in here, a couple of different options to try to reroute that sewer. It serves a fairly good chunk of the southeast portion of the city. And of course, working with the railroad if that thing were ever to fail is always a challenge, but the cost of including it in this project is quite dramatic because of the depth of the sewer that would be required to get that flow either to Junius or to Washington. So, we did include some options, we included some cost estimates, but in discussing with the engineering department and looking at the videos, it appears that that may be a better candidate for a lining project as a separate project. So, those are the three big options. Lynn, can you click to the next? I think we've got... There we go. So, looking at the option, we're recommending at this time is to reconstruct Junius from Union to Cascade, bringing it up to state aid standards, the road out there, other than this first stretch from Union up halfway to Court, the road is approximately 31 to 32 feet wide. In order to bring it up to state aid standards, the project would increase the width of that road to 36 feet. That provides two 10-foot driving lanes and two 8-foot parking lanes, so if you've driven through there, it's a challenge to pass if there's cars parked on both sides, this will prove that. There's ample right-of-way, the city has a 75-foot wide right-of-way up there. Currently, the road is shifted slightly south of the center of the right-of-way, so we're proposing that the road would expand to the north, that's the red hatch there. It does a couple of things, it better centers the road in the right-of-way, it also helps preserve some of the trees on that stretch. Most of the trees along the north side of that road will have to be removed as part of this project, but this way, we save the trees, have a chance to save some of the trees on the south side. A number of the mature trees on that stretch have been removed in the last few years anyway, so it's not a lot of trees, but we try to save them whenever we can. The tightest block, of course, can you go to the next page, is the block between Court and Mill, in front of the police station and the county courthouse there. So, that's the one that gets wide, and that's where we will lose the bulk of the trees, and it looks like there's five of them. So, we're not, thankfully not talking about removing a lot of trees. This project will replace all the curb and gutter and sidewalk as needed, a lot of that sidewalk is fairly new in front of the police department and the Bethlehem church there, I know is all fairly new. So, that's what we're recommending at this time. We're anticipating special assessments, like I said, state aid funds and some city funds, so we did design everything to state aid standards to make sure that we can meet those rules, bring the street up to a 10-ton road. I think that's everything. Did I miss anything?
Just think of utility replacements over there.
Yeah, yeah, standard utility replacements, all of that, all of the water sewer up there is on the older end, I don't remember exactly what the age of it is, but it's 60s and 70s, so looking at putting in and rerouting a few things to better serve the community. I can answer questions?
Maybe just a real general question, is there pretty significant, like, non-profit and government property ownership along that block, does that do anything to change anything?
It's, it's, I don't, yes, there is significant, I mean, it's the police department, it's the county courthouse, it's two churches, county and city parking lots, there's very little actual private property along there, I think there's one residence and a couple of businesses, so I don't know how that, I guess I don't know off the top of my head how that affects special assessments, the state aid funds and the city funds, of course, it has no effect on it, it would just be a matter of those.
Obviously, I just kind of came to my mind, something you guys are just working through.
It is, it is unique in that way, in that, I mean, I'm not anticipating a lot of, you know, sometimes on these projects, we get residents upset with us, and there's really no residents to be upset with.
Probably one, right, there's one on.
I'm assuming the city is going to be the biggest difficult, the most difficult resident on that one.
But assuming it's reasonable when the assessments come back for the preliminary hearing, I know that property owner, they've been patient, they've been dealing with a lot on that road for several years, so.
They'll be fine, they'll be fine with it.
Yeah, and there is preliminary, some preliminary cost estimates included in this and some preliminary assessments, if there are questions on that.
Any questions for Alex? Brian?
Thank you, thank you, Alex. Yes, as mentioned, a portion of this improvement is going to be specially assessed per statute 429. The proposed amount funded by special assessment consists of a portion of the street, just like all of our other projects. Because of this, I have special benefit appraisals done by Pastor and Master and Dodd counselors from Burnsville, they have determined a special benefit from this improvement to all subject properties within the proposed project limits is reasonable in comparison to the city's preliminary assessment rules. The proposed commercial rate is $85 per linial foot, there is one residence within this property, and we're recommending the same rate, but add a reduced footage based on our policy between commercial and residential special assessments. So, if acceptable, the next step is to schedule the preliminary improvement project hearing. I'm requesting to set this for June 17th, 2024, at 5:30 PM in these council chambers. Just like other projects, publications will be sent to all the subject properties and a publication in a newspaper. And as Alex mentioned too, another component of this was the sanitary sewer alternate between Handen underneath the Otter Tail Railroad, this was Option 3A and 3B. As mentioned, those costs range from 1.3 to 1.6, we have determined that rehabilitation can be done at a much cheaper price. Therefore, I'm also requesting to initiate Public Improvement 7225, the Hamden Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project from Union Avenue to Mill Street. So, just to recap, at this time, and I'll open up to any questions, what I'm requesting is to accept the preliminary engineering report for CP 5961, setting a preliminary improvement project hearing date for June 17th, 2024, and initiating Public Improvement 7225, and I'll open up to any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian, we can bring that to the council, the motion, thank you, Jim. Thanks, Anthony, questions for Brian, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Brian, you mentioned the sanitary sewer, so the, it sounds like there's three different options, we can fix what's there, we can alternate A, do reroute, alternate B, do a reroute, so the preferred one is to fix what's there, is that the way I understood it?
Correct, correct, in place, the rerouting, either to Washington or going down Junius to Union, that sewer, I think we estimate up to about 34 feet deep, can be done, but there's going to be a lot more impacts to the adjacent trees and everything, and then the sheer cost, when you look at that versus just doing a trenchless rehabilitation to that sewer beneath railroad tracks, seems to be a much better option at this time.
I think I like the idea. In the maps that were provided, there was, apparently there's been some rerouting done in the past.
Correct.
And so, trying to follow the logic or the rationale as to why we would have rerouted things in the past versus not now, was there some advantage before that was really good to rerouting as opposed to not in this case?
Yeah, no, thank you, that's a, like, I believe back in 2016, when we did the Cascade Reconstruction Project from Washington to Vernon, and it's showing on the map too, we did that rerouting some of that sewer as well. Basically, that sewer flows did converge near the library and then go westward beneath the parking. Because we were removing and replacing the entire street, it was just more feasible, more cost-effective to reroute the sewer up to Washington, so where it once converged by library, it all drains to the north now to Washington, but that was predicated on because we're reconstructing the street, so. Why, just look at those type of options, what's improvement, yes, having a sewer beneath railroad tracks is not ideal. However, it hasn't been in existence for years, and just by sheer price and everything, we cohabitate in there, it just seems like a good option at this time, at least to rehabilitate it for longevity.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott, thanks, Brian, any other questions? There's a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next item is another Street and Utility Project, CP 5959, again, Brian Uvaro.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, CNL Excavating, they were awarded the Construction Services Contract to reconstruct Stanton Avenue from Broadway to Union, it's currently going on progress, they've started on the utilities here actually this week, near the Broadway intersection. Just wanted to note, this project is to be substantially completed this fall and the final wearing course in spring. Otter Tail Power is planning to install and operate four overhead portamental light poles associated with this project. They're proposing these four poles to be on Stanton Avenue from Vine Street to Union Avenue on the south side, they'll be just adjacent to the 10-foot regional walk that we're proposing as part of this project. So, like typical projects in the past, they have an agreement, which is consistent with past projects the city has accepted, that's included in the packet, so at this time, I'm requesting authorization to accept the Outdoor Lighting and Municipal Service Agreement between the city of Fergus Falls and Otter Tail Power Company for CP 5959.
Thanks, Brian, we can bring this to the council with a motion, thank you, Scott, someone like to second that? Thanks, Laura, questions for Brian? All in favor of bringing this to the council on Monday night, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, next item on the agenda is 2024 Sidewalk Program Rates. PI 6081, go ahead, Brian, thank you.
Thank you. Seth, we've reviewed the rates for the 2023 Sidewalk and Driveway Program, along with material and cost increases for 2024. We're recommending the following unit rate adjustments for the 2024 Sidewalk Program. I'll just go over the ones that we're looking to change, we're looking to do a 50-cent increase for removal of concrete, six-inch walk driveway, increase of $2, and then curb and gutter, believe it or not, we're looking to reduce that $5 per linial foot, and then saw cuts, we're looking at a rate of $2 increase. Like I mentioned, these rates will be applied to all concrete sidewalk and driveway work within the right-of-way, which is initiated 100% petition by the property owners for the 2024 construction season. Each individual petition is written to represent the exact cost of each improvement, it is agreed upon using these rates that you're looking to approve. So, at this time, I'm requesting two things, to initiate Public Improvement 6081, the 2024 Sidewalk and Driveway Program, and then to approve the 2024 sidewalk assessment rates as noted in this memo, so. At this time, I'll open up to any questions you may have.
I'll offer that. Thanks, Brian, thank you, Jim.
I'll second him.
Thanks, Anthony, any questions on the sidewalk rates for Brian? All in favor of bringing these recommendations to the council, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, one more for you, I believe, Minnesota State Active Transportation Infrastructure Program.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Interstate Engineering was solicited for a professional service agreement for the new stairway design and sidewalk improvements along Randolph Avenue. Refer to the projection, this was submitted, is referred to as Option Number Three, that was approved by the Active Transportation Group. The area in yellow shown on the screen is the approximate location of the new new concrete stairway and sidewalk improvements, there is a red dash line that kind of indicates how students move generally, and in that quadrant right there, where you can see there's very excessively graded sidewalk that exhibits very excessive grades, that's really what I consider very dangerous for students and everything, especially during the winter months. So, in conjunction with the school district and everything, we came up with this proposal, we were awarded a grant in an amount of $172,030, or excuse me, the total estimated project cost is $172,030. The Active Transportation Grant that we were awarded, it was $145,563. Therefore, local match is estimated at $26,466. Now, in speaking with the school district last Friday, they have affirmed that they will match their 50% of this $26,000 local share, leaving the remaining share to the city. Exploring and recommending that we use municipal state aid construction funds for our local match. So, is what I'm requesting is to accept Interstate Engineering's Professional Services Design Proposal in the amount of $23,780 for Public Improvement 5361, and I'll open up to any questions you may have.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Anthony, someone like to second, Scott, thank you, questions for Brian?
Just clarify, it is going to be heated, so.
Yes, going through those, we, when we went through the initial design, some of them, some of the design options were like doing a transparent canopy over it, you know, the whole, the stairs were not ideal, how were the grades traverse that area are very less than ideal, so we explored a canopy, that was very expensive, so the heated option was what the school district requested, and we will have an agreement upon the completion of this, where they'll be taking over those power needs and future maintenance as well.
Thank you, Brian.
Anthony, any other questions for Brian? All in favor of bringing this to the council on Monday night, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, we will talk about sidewalk sales policy with our Community Development Manager Clara Beck, good morning, Clara.
Good morning, everybody. This is going back to a conversation that we started a couple weeks ago. When the weather starts to get warmer, we get lots of requests for people to do events outside, which is great, we love to see that. However, to make things a little bit easier for staff and for people in the community to understand, we think it makes sense to put in place some policies to follow. So, the first one that we're going to talk about this morning is sidewalk sales. The city code does allow council to say that sidewalk sales are an allowable use of public space, so we just put some parameters in place to make sure that we don't have to bring every single one of those requests in front of you, and that businesses who are downtown or wherever in the city where they want to do these sidewalk sales, they have some rules that they can follow, and they will just know that they can do what they want to do. So, the parameters that we have in place for this policy are they need to have five feet of space left for passage of pedestrians, which I believe is what is required for ADA passage. They are allowed to have up to eight sales a year, which my thought process was in the warmer months, that could be up to two events outside a year. And they, if they want to do more than that, they do need to come and ask council if that's okay. We are not going to require that they pay a fee to do sidewalk sales, and again, they are not going to have to submit an application or come speak before council to get approval, they can just, they can just do their sales if they're following these guidelines. And then at the end of the policy, we do say that city council can revoke this or change this at any time if things are not working out the way that we envision that they will. So, that's the sidewalk sale policy, any questions on that?
I got a question, so how, how would, like, Don Pablo's has seats outside their restaurant, so where do they fall into this scope?
That's a really good question, actually.
Is that the same as a sidewalk sale?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't classify that as the same, and that's kind of a holdover, I think, from COVID, when we simply allowed the use of restaurants to have tables outside. So, that could be a separate discussion that council has about if you want to see that practice continue, or if you don't. I don't, we haven't gotten any complaints about it.
Lynn has a clarifying point.
Don Pablo's also has their liquor license that allows them to have outdoor seating that's contingent to their location, so.
So, because obviously, you know, potentially Stella's might do the same.
Yeah, sure.
So, the same rules would apply.
Would this cover, I mean, as long as, I mean, obviously, they still have to have a pathway, right? So, I mean, is there a way to just to include this, that they don't have to get, right? Because I think we want to encourage them to be able to use their space, right? So, maybe we could just include this in the, unless the council feels differently.
No, I mean, it was just that if you can have a set of rules for one, you should have rules for the other.
Yeah, no, that makes perfect sense.
Okay, so we'll make that addition, any other, well, would someone like to make a motion to bring this to the council, Anthony?
I can do that.
Thanks, Al, second, thanks, Al. Any other questions for Clara? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries, thanks, Clara. Next item from Clara is the street closure policy.
Yep, so along that same vein, we do get a lot of requests for street closures, and we haven't really had any kind of policy in place, we've been sort of taking it just as they come, but looking at what other cities are doing, they have processes in place where their council weighs in on every single street closure, which we like the idea of, we want, first of all, it lets council know what's going on, and then second of all, it gives it that a little bit, it gives it a little bit more weight that council has weighed in and said, yes, we are okay with the street being closed, and then that gives us the opportunity to connect the dots between our public works and our emergency services to make sure that they're aware of the street closures happening. So, we do have a policy outlined and then an application process that we would hope that people would follow. It does require that they get up to 75% of the businesses or homes, if this is a block party, to agree to the street closure, which is not something that we've required in the past, but again, is something that we've seen from other Minnesota cities that we think was a good idea. We would be normally restricting street closures to sunrise and sunset, so they're not coming out in the dark and doing street closures then, and like I said, there would be a minimum of 60 days where we would get the application in and be able to start making connections between whoever needs to know about the street closure beforehand, and then start getting the word out to the community that the street is going to be closed.
How many, how many days is that?
60.
That seems a lot.
That seems like a lot.
Does it seem like a lot? Okay.
Maybe we can work on that, I think that a lot of times, people will come up with an event, and they have an idea, and it happens in less than 60 days, so let's just be flexible on that.
30 days?
I think the best party is the unplanned party.
10 days?
10 days.
10 days.
That gives staff enough time, is that?
Well, you have council enough time to act.
That, I think we can work within that, if it, you know, if there's not, I mean, there's typically a committee of the whole or a council meeting within a 10-day period, and I think the most important thing is staff has the time, I mean, I think that's the, you know, if you guys work out the details, we'll be able to work with you.
Also, I think the people that want to close the street, they knowing that they have the 10 days, should be able to work with that also.
Absolutely. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, they've got a question.
Anthony, Jim, thank you, okay, go ahead, Anthony.
So, so Lake OLV has, when they do like their fish fries and they do some of their events, I think, is it Vine, the back of the church? They kind of do like a drive-through, so they kind of like half-close the street?
Okay.
So, how would we handle that?
Half-closing the street? I mean.
We're looking, like, we're looking at your body language, do you like this or do you not like this? And you're playing a good poker face right now, we're not sure.
It varies, it depends whether I can get into my house or not.
I see.
Because that's the only issue, is that, like, when they do it, and I don't want to stop it from happening, but it is inconvenient to residents.
Yeah. How, how have they handled that in the past, I mean, are they asking permission to close the street?
Yeah, they have.
They have?
Yeah, and we provide them barricades.
Yep.
Provide barricades, okay, well, then I think they would need to follow the same policy that everybody is following. Even if it's only half, you still, there's still addresses that are affected, so in the application process, you have to list what addresses are next to the street that would be closing, and then that's who you get the permission from.
Because it restricts car, it restricts traffic flow, so you can't go both ways.
And it's a very narrow street.
And it's not, not wide in the first place.
And emergency services as well, like, they would definitely want to make sure that the staff is aware, so. I'd say the same process, right?
Yeah.
Just working within the, make sure that staff and public safety knows.
Okay.
Good, okay.
But in that case, they're not, they don't actually close the street, I mean, the traffic has kind of worked differently, and there's people out there and all that, but they don't actually close the street, so it's not, it's not really covered by this in that specific example.
I think it's, if you restrict traffic flow from its normal, I think anything that restricts traffic flow from its normal course should, should have an application.
Right, but the closure is the key word here, they're not closing the street when they do that, so.
But you can't drive down it, you can't drive back up it, they make it a one-way street.
Okay, it's not closed. I don't know that this is exactly what you need to apply in that situation, and I don't know that it's been a problem that we need to create a policy for.
I would just make the suggestion that staff, I think Anthony's word restricted is an important one, like, if people are going to restrict regular traffic from signage and public safety standpoint, we just want to know about it and work with city staff to make sure, right?
Yep.
I think this, I think it's workable within the policy, but.
Just a question for clarification, is this something that you guys would be okay with on our list of licenses that we've put out? That we have a closure, that we've just included?
Yeah.
So, request that we basically, like, they've complied with everything the city has, and then we just put it on that license list each time?
Yeah.
Or do you want it on a separate agenda?
No, no, I think personally it would be fine like that.
On the, on the, every time, yeah, got it, licenses as far as council agenda, yeah, got it, yeah.
Yeah.
Permits.
So, just on the schedule, the street's got to close.
Could we just call it full or partial street closure policy?
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. You could not get a fire engine down there, or you could not get an ambulance down there when they do it.
No, not down that street.
Yeah, I think the important thing is just so staff knows, is aware of that again, so. All right, we have a motion to bring this to the council, any other questions for Clara? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. And street closure is a good segue into our next, I have one other item that we're going to bring before, we'll call on Kyle and Bill here, but they actually came to the city requesting a street closure for an event that they were looking to host this summer, and working through with staff have kind of come up with a possible compromise that would include the closure of one of the parking lots. But Bill, why don't you tell us about the event, and then we can get into the
First of all, thanks.
Details.
I personally run the Morehead Cruise Night in Morehead. We do it five months out of the year, we were downtown Morehead, and again, I approached the city council, and you talked about event stuff, I personally have the event program that I have to go through through the state, same with you guys. So, we would bring this up to you guys, we would talk to the city guys and say, here's what we're going to close off. We average anywhere between 250 to 300 cars, we average over 3,000 people a night. We want to bring it here to Fergus Falls. We're talking about maybe using your parking lot back here. Are we going to get that many cars the first year, probably not, if we can average 100 to 200, I think that would be awesome. So, we're asking you guys for permission to use that parking lot. Yes, we're going to have to talk to your patrons that are Yes, we're going to have to talk to your patrons that are over there. We would personally bring a flyer and we'll show you, it'll have your logo and everything on it and stuff for everything. And we're just asking if that would be permission to go forward and work with that.
So after, um, just discussions with staff and, uh, it would be a portion of the lot on, you know, behind the, or with the, in the pavilion parking lot. Obviously, it's the same night, same day as the farmer's market. So, uh, we did talk to the farmer's market and they're completely, well, they're very, um, agreeable to this happening on the same day, just a matter of coordination. So I, I guess the request is just to get the council's blessing to work with staff to, uh, have a, a portion of that parking lot closed, you know, closed off, reserved for these cars on Wednesday nights, working in conjunction with the farmer's market to make sure that logistics all work for everybody.
One Wednesday per month.
One Wednesday per month, sorry, the first Wednesday.
The only thing I would say is when, when, when will the splash pad car park be open? Because that would, you know, that, that's, at the moment, I mean, that's halving that parking lot. So parking is kind of restricted.
I think by June third, this is intended to be, so by the first week, I think we would be good with, uh, parking lot is according to the schedule, is that correct, Andrew?
I'd look at Brian.
Nope, yeah.
Okay, other than the ground opening and then a few weeks shortly thereafter, we're going to put the final wear and striping on.
Sure.
A bunch of this stuff and we'll leave it, then it'll be fully open once the wear is done.
So, um, anyone, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Al. Scott, any questions for, thanks you guys for, hopefully, hopefully we grow into where we're making a request to close the street down. I know you've talked about that and, um, yeah, anything we can get downtown and help our businesses and so, thanks for, thanks for bringing the idea to the council. So bring this to the council on Monday night, go ahead, Scott.
As a part of this, just trying to understand the activity itself, I mean, you'll have cars parked for kind of a car show for people to come and see. Is there a parade or a route that is kind of a piece of this?
At the present time, I wouldn't do a cruise through, um, even in downtown Morehead. We did the same thing where we didn't have enough, enough room for the cars to park. We had people try to park up on the sidewalk, which we can't do it because of the fire department with the mall and stuff. So at this time, I wouldn't worry about a cruise through, it's mainly a parking spot to come. We run the event from five to eight-thirty, we have bands every single night as well. We talked about maybe doing a DJ or something for the first couple of times, just to see how it works. And then, I hate to say it, I think within a year, we'll probably have to find a different place because it's going to be too big. Another one we talked about is M State Parking Lot, um, we could do it over there too. That's where I am presently doing it this year in Morehead. Last month, uh, actually this month, we had three hundred and sixty-eight cars registered to come, but we got rained out and that's the first time in three years that we got rained out. So I, I personally would not have a drive-through because of the safety issues.
That answers the question as far as what would happen right where the cars are parked. I guess my question goes beyond that, is if you have some sort of a loop that the cars are kind of driving through town, you know, up to the R T C and back, or through downtown over to the school and back, or anything like that? Is there any sort of a ongoing cruise trail?
We don't do that, um, you'll get the Cars and Coffee guys that'll do that, they'll stop, stay at the Holiday, the Holiday Gas Station, stop there. They'll go up to the Kmart building, they'll go around that way. We don't, uh, my philosophy is, is when I brought it to Morehead is, we're trying to get the public to come in and talk to people and just have an atmosphere for kids and everybody to come in. I don't like the cruise side of it because a lot of people drink and drive with it and I don't like that. I'd rather have just a sit-down, talk to the people and stuff. And I encourage you guys, if you get a chance, come up to our car show. It's absolutely amazing how many people will come up and talk to you on the cars. It is.
I love the idea of the show and I, I've had quite a history in them actually, so I understand that. And it's just with the name Cruise Night, it just sounds like a moving thing, not a static thing.
Correct.
And so that's why I was trying to understand.
My thing, you have to cruise in to cruise out.
I like that style.
Sorry, I always have an answer for the city council, but I, I truthfully understand where you're coming from. But I don't like the idea of driving from one place to another, it's no different from when they do bar hopping. I don't like that idea of it. And we have a lot of guys that are my age that do that, I go the opposite direction. We have a cruise tonight to Abercrombie, they have Dollar Beer Night. You don't think they're going to be, yeah. I'm not, I'm going to cruise there, I'm going to have my burger and then leave. But I agree, I see what you're saying.
I do appreciate the fact that you market this as a family-friendly.
It's my biggest thing. And that's how I started it in Morehead and, and I encourage Mayor to call Dan Molly, the city manager, or Shelley Carlson. They'll tell you what I've done for the last four years up there, so.
And what was the proposed date again?
June third is the, I think it's June third, it's the first Wednesday of every month, I think, is what the proposal is. June third would be the first one, correct?
Correct.
All right, any other questions for Bill or Kyle? Thanks again, you guys, for bringing this. I'll have a motion to bring this to the council, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Lynn, anything else to come before the council? If not, we're adjourned.